Over you go. All right, everyone, welcome to our special and regular session tonight, February 13th of 2024. I'm just going to call it order, and first of all, has everyone signed on the sheet? Has signed the sheet for public orders? It's required by us, because we have a special session, which is that we have to get everybody to sign in, in your attendance. So anyway, make sure everybody's signed in on that. Citizens input, I've got two requests for citizens input. If you want, I guess, you want to do it after this one deal, Mary and Kathy? This is one little thing, special session, and we'll come back and open a regular session.
That's fine.
But it won't be until seven. Is that all right with you? All right, so a public hearing, this is for the consideration of rezoning Highway 276. Is this the property on which side of the golf course it is?
It's on the west side.
On the west side?
Yeah.
Coming up to the golf course, James's property.
Yeah, it's on the west side of James's property.
Okay, okay. So is everybody familiar with that? So we've already done this once with another set, I guess it was six properties.
We did it.
We did it on the west side of the EDC property, I'll call it. And now we're doing it on the east side of it, what I'll call EDC property.
Yeah, we did six lot before it got rejected, then we came back last month and with the new layout, and we got approved for flat. Since it was a commercial property, and then we are having a seventeen, it's seventeen single family on the back. We want to rezon that as a single family, S F three.
It's a three?
Yes, sir. Yeah. And all the lots are six thousand and, six thousand square foot and above.
How many lot?
There is, I think, I think we have sixteen, sixteen single family and five commercial.
Tracy, Derek, and I don't care. You think, are there any questions or anything on this? Comments? I'm going to move on to number five, number five discussion action to close the public hearing. Chairman, can I motion?
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
In a second. All favor.
Kevin Patterson.
Leon Myers.
Jack McConnell.
Christopher Pitt. You do the cameras and and number six is a discussion or take action to call the order of regular session. Oh, I'm sorry, close the public session. Y'all approve of that, now we're going to go into a regular session, but we won't do it till seven.
I think we did that. Didn't we leave the time off on purpose?
Can't do it on a regular meeting.
Yeah, yeah, you can't, you can't.
They have to start at seven.
Yeah. You know, this.
If it would have been a special meeting, we could.
Yeah, because it does, the time of the meeting is, we can set it ourselves, but it has to be in accordance or a resolution to change.
Resolution.
Yeah, to, in order to change it. So real quick, we close the public hearing. As far as turning to regular session, that's going to not be big for now, but we'll just call it six thirty six for the ending of the special hearing, public hearing. And then at straight up seven, we'll start the regular session. I wish we could just jump right into it, should benefit all of us, but we can't. So I guess we'll just pause it, turn it off, whatever.
Okay, we're gonna return to regular session. It is six thirty on five February thirteenth. Uh, everyone will stand for the implication of the pledge of allegiance.
Good evening, Father. Thank you for this beautiful day and for this gathering here tonight and for the opportunity to serve our city. We ask that you will guide us as we strive to build a city that is worthy of every, every citizen that lives here. And as we work to make decisions that will benefit all of us. Help us to listen with understanding and give us the wisdom to move our city in the direction of progress and prosperity. And Father, we pray for those that work for our city and ask for your protection to shield them as they do their work. We're truly grateful for their efforts and for all of their dedication. Watch over everyone as we go about our daily lives and may we feel your grace and strength throughout the days ahead. We ask all of these things in your son, Jesus' name.
Amen. Let it be to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, any announcements? You want your hand up or hang it out?
So, ever since I moved to this town, there's been an issue with my property. I've tried several times to get it fixed. And I've finally been able to get it fixed and I'm finally able to annex my full property into the city. So, for the citizens that have issues with that, I wanted to make sure that y'all know we've been working on it. And I've finally got it taken care of, so the paperwork will be filed this evening.
So, the paperwork you're talking about, what you're bringing up, has anything to do with the council or anything?
No, no, just announcing.
Okay. Anything else? Uh, moving on to item number five, citizen input, and that would be, uh, Mary Hall. I think I have you. Mary?
Mayor, council, and citizens, uh, thank you for hearing me this evening. I just wanted to speak on, uh, the new business under eighteen, which is the park board, uh, committee. Uh, I am chairperson of Keith West Walkney Beautiful. And we would love to partner with the new committee if you decide to form that tonight. Uh, and help them in their efforts to revitalize our city park, which is our number two asset. Only surpassed, surpassed by our number one asset, which is our residents. Uh, Keith West Walkney Beautiful has a vested interest in the city park. And we want to see it flourish and grow as our city grows. And I also want to invite everyone to our Keith West Walkney Beautiful meeting on Thursday here at the city at six thirty. Thank you.
And Kathy O'Neill, uh, made in trail.
Okay, I just have a short statement. I'm Kathy O'Neill. I think everybody here knows me. I have four different names. Um, I'd like to make a statement as secretary of the Walkney Park and Fire Department on their behalf. We have secured a loan and construction has started on the parking lot of the fire department. We heard your concerns around Halloween regarding safety. TVFD took action, not only for Halloween, but upcoming events we have planned for the community as well. Currently, an estimated fifteen thousand square foot of concrete is being poured. This allows for additional parking at the rear of the building. Safe parking to keep the kiddos away from the main road. In addition, this will also address the stormwater drainage issues around, surrounding the building. The team is still working to secure additional funds. That will include additional square footage for a landing zone to land emergency helicopters. Please know that the citizens of West Walkney are our first and only priority.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we'll move on to number six, consent agenda items. Which includes, uh, minutes, the bills to be paid, financial reports for this fiscal year. Court report, police department report, as well as public works, work order. Uh, that also includes completed and outstanding, uh, and their, their regular monthly report. Uh, we have a permit report, code enforcement report, EDC minutes for November, December, and January of this year. Keith Walkney Beautiful minutes, planning and zoning minutes, uh, for December, January, February. I mean, yeah, December, January, no meeting in January. Oh, and, uh, the report for all American dogs. Uh, which one is it? Oh, okay. I didn't see it on, uh, on the dogs. I didn't, I don't remember seeing it.
Yeah, it is.
I don't think I have January EDC though.
There is no January EDC. We did not have a meeting in January.
Yeah, it said there was.
There's a dog. You want to see that? Oh, okay. Is this an extra copy or?
No, that was mine.
Oh, okay.
But if you need it, you can add.
I think we're all right now.
I can make one of our.
Uh, so anyone on, I'm gonna, consent agenda items and chairman of the campaign motion.
I have the question before you move on with that. With Mike, there you go. I read something in here on your director's report that it absolutely makes me very happy. It's that very last paragraph that says all of your employees, the public works employees, will be able to test for their license. So, that mean every one of them will have a license?
Be the first time ever in the city, yeah.
That's wonderful.
I'm gonna make some traction. My wheels turn slow. Uh, so, uh, any, any motion on, uh, uh, I guess nine?
Well, yeah, rule six, consent agenda items.
Well, yeah, the consent agenda, yeah.
I'm making a motion with pretty consent agenda items.
A second motion.
Yeah, then.
Kevin Fenshaw.
Leon Meyer.
Chuck Condon.
Robin Meyer.
Chris Brooke.
Here's your numbers. Uh, moving on, uh, to old business, uh, seven A discussion interaction of updating, uh, city Facebook page. And Rob, I got your name out there, but I guess because the last time.
Yeah, and, and I did bring copies of that, that research that I did. So, if anybody would like to see that, you can. Um, it, I was not trying to make any kind of determination on that. I just did the research to bring to y'all so that you could decide once you start. We want to put the part on the Facebook page back in action, so. Uh, if anybody wants to see that, I've only got a little bit of it, so. But it's, it's pretty extensive. I spent about, about a week and a half plus, um, long before that. And it's got three pages on that, so. So, uh, and it's, all it does is really just give you a general overview of the five different cities that I called or that I went on their Facebook page and researched and read it, hours of comments and things like that. And the recommendations that I kind of got from one of their sister cities about how they handle, uh, their Facebook page. So, that's what this is. If anybody wants to see it, I have it.
I think that I seen, looking at some Facebook pages, uh, there are some cities that don't have comments.
Do they have comments?
There's, and one of them was Rockwall. And you can, you can like it, you can share it, or you can send a message. But there's not comments. So, that, that would be something I would like for us if we were able to do this, to have something like that. Because even back when Facebook came up, and I think at the time, the only people that are on council now that are on council currently is Chris and myself. And I was, I was very much so against Facebook at that time because of, number one, I was just getting into council. Number two, there were some other things that there's no reason to mention that I didn't feel like Facebook was a good fit for our city at that time. And I was very strong at that. But I think we've, we've evolved from some of those things that my opinion, the way I felt at that moment. And I've heard the citizens for all this time. And it's, it's become such a great way of communication for our citizens and they, they sort of, that's what our citizens all go to. But if we were able to do it, in, in my thoughts, if we could do it in a sense where we didn't have the comments, because I think that's still a great concern of everybody's, and it can get out of hand. I, I hundred percent agree with that because everybody has their opinion and they're entitled to that opinion. And, and they could send that opinion by message if, if that was a way that we could go with it. You know, rather than it be a, I just don't, and I think that's how, that's how I felt before. I didn't want it to be a place for mud slinging because it seems like that's what it gets turned into. I mean, all the Facebook pages that, that we all see now currently, it's, it's a good mud slinging place. That's, that's what it's used for, is to sling mud. Um, but that's where I, that's why I looked at you when I said that, because.
Yeah, I mean, that's an option that you guys can do. And the other thing is it would stop any potential for the council members to comment as well in the future. I mean, I'm not saying that you guys would necessarily, but you don't know the next round. You can get into forum issues that way.
And you get.
But, uh, so that's really up to the city, what you guys want to make that choice. But if you're gonna do it one way, you gotta stick with that way.
Would it be smart to put an ordinance in place before we put the Facebook page back in?
No, I, I, I think, I think so. I don't, I don't think tonight we're gonna say, Facebook's turned on tomorrow.
I think we did an ordinance. We need to know who's gonna run it and what's gonna be allowed and what's not. And it needs to be an ordinance so that we have control over it.
Well, I think in the last meeting, we talked about who's gonna, it's gonna, it needs to be city folks, right? And, and I'll just go ahead and say, I've had some conversations within some of the city folks. And one certain person raised her hand and said that she would definitely grab that bull by the horns.
So, if we put an ordinance together, then we can control what's being put out?
And I think that's what the purpose of this visit is, to figure out how we're gonna do that. And then we put that complete plan into place and then whatever next meeting we have, if we put this on that meeting, then, then we, then we start making it, I guess, legal, right? Because everything we do has to have its own formalities.
And unfortunately, we were supposed to have a special session just to talk through what would be on the Facebook page and how to move forward with it. If we need to do that, then unfortunately, we were unable to do that session. So, that probably needs to get back on the books.
Well, and I think, I think, you know, with it being here tonight, we could probably have that special session with whatever we say tonight will be there. So, we can keep this ball rolling.
And I like what you said because most of this information that I gathered, most of those cities, I think, except for one, I can't really have read it in a while. It was just information only, just to get the word out to the people and to let them know what was happening around the city. If there's water leaks, if there's road closures, you know, whatever that is.
And they can share.
We need that.
Yeah, they can still share it and they can, they can, they can actually send a messenger, right? Um, if they so choose, because that's, that was the options, it was a like, share, or a messenger, um, option on everything that was on there. So, I, I would, I would ask that, you know, that would be what we would do. I mean, everybody else, you know, chime in on that. But I, I think that would be a good way and it's just a free stream for us. Um, you know, we just had an issue this past week where our website went down. You know, if, I don't know if it would have been legal or if it would have surfaced, but we, if the website wasn't able to be brought back up. If they could have posted the agenda on our Facebook page, I don't know if that would suffice or not.
You gotta do due diligence.
Yeah, yeah. You know, you still have to post it out front and so you're covered by doing your posts up front. But it is a really good tool for addition.
Yes, and I just feel like that in that instance, when our website was down, then that would have been a really good way to let our citizens know, hey, here's the agenda. We can't get it on the website, website's down. We could have posted all that on there too. And we sent out stuff by hours or whatever, but my, my thoughts are we do it without the comments and we, we do it right. So, you know, again, like I said, Rockwall, Rockwall was, and what I did is I just went from our city and I started, you know, on Facebook, I started driving away and just going to each one over and looking and looking and looking. Some, a lot of them had comments, but if you look on there, nothing makes sense because they deleted something. And it's anytime profanity or whatever, they have the right, they can delete that. So, you could read through comments and you could tell if the story's not working because somebody's stuff got pulled out because they got ugly in there. So, why even, why even make somebody have that task?
The state of Texas has a whole social media, um, lack of better word, I don't know, mandate or something on there. And then they also mentioned if you decide to not include comments, or you, if you decide to include comments, you can have an administrator approve comments, or you can have comments freely. And then there's a whole page of things that.
Code of Ethics.
Basically, right, so that admin can go and delete them. So, you've got lots of options there.
I would like to see it where we just had it.
No comments, yes.
City business.
They can share it. I mean, which sounds good because that gets the word out.
Yeah, exactly. Didn't, didn't one of those cities tell you not to let the council members post on the?
Yeah, I asked if they let their council members comment and they said absolutely not. Because what they were, what the fear was is that if a council member got on there and answered someone's question, a public citizen's question, and said something that was inappropriate or that was wrong or misquoted something, that could lead to all kinds of legal issues. So, that's why they chose to not let the council members do it.
So, we think we need to do a special session on that, whatever I say, to bring this back.
I think that way we lay it out there completely. There aren't lots of things it sounds like we want to make sure we're putting in there and taking out.
We would need a, is it an ordinance or is it a, uh? Resolution? So, we need a resolution.
I thought, I thought Shannon had her one and she.
There may be, but I mean, we need a resolution to be able to look at it, that special session, and if, and say if we approve it or not. I know that she's willing to, she's willing to spearhead it and I'm guessing you're gonna, you're gonna get one of your counterparts to be your backup, right? So, we would know at that meeting who those people, we could name those people, right? Um, and then we could all decide that this is how, this is how we approve as a council of doing it, that it would not be in a commenting page. It would just be an information space.
One thing that's gonna be really important is designating office positions and people with backup access so that there's never a disgruntled employee that locks you out.
Yes.
So, that's, that's probably one of your high priority things, is making sure that it's designated. Who is gonna have access and management access to it. It's always tied to like the city secretary email with the backup, but that, that's how you can get back in if something gets locked out. And if people get their Facebook page hacked and stuff like that. So, we've gotta have, that's one of the things you've gotta look at is who to designate, who is backup, who's your contact, point contact.
And it's the office position, not the person.
Correct, especially if you're a resolution because those positions.
Change, yes.
Do we wanna do it in like two weeks, a week? Twenty, twenty-seven?
It's good on mine.
I'm twentieth and twenty-seventh. I can't any, twentieth, nineteenth, twentieth, and twenty-seven.
Nineteenth, twentieth, and twenty-seven?
Yes, sir.
Next week, I may be sitting my grandson's, so. Both my daughter and son will be out of town, so.
Next week, what about the week after?
Twenty-sixth or twenty-eighth?
Twenty-sixth to the, yeah, to the first.
Monday to twenty-sixth, is that where you do that?
Everybody?
Yeah.
I think I'm good.
Six thirty?
And this will be, you can go to Facebook.
Is that six thirty?
Yeah. It's, uh, it's about that two weeks.
Shannon, you gonna be able to get us a, uh, what'd we say, a resolution?
Uh, we'll work on one, make notes.
Maybe it's very time.
Well, we can ask the league to get us one.
Well, what I was gonna say is we can have kind of a shell of something and then walk through what we wanna do. And then for the, the next meeting, actually, have a conformed copy of that, of the next plan.
Get you one of, uh, new, nope, that's, that is the digital note ticker or?
I've had this for a couple of years. It's a super note. I love it.
I never heard of it until just recently.
Yeah, but I love this thing.
All right.
All my notes.
So, you're gonna need a motion for that, right?
Yeah, we need a motion on number seven A. No, actually, yeah, see, yeah, that's right. On the Facebook page.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, have a special session meeting on February the twenty-sixth. I'll make a motion that we, uh, have a special session meeting on February the twenty sixth to discuss the Facebook page, uh, about, uh, no comments and just information.
And and naming our people on the admins.
Yes, and appointing an admin.
I s- I second that motion.
Okay.
Kevin Featherstone?
Leon Myers.
Jack O'Connell.
Chris Burkett. Uh, we went on a seven B discussion interaction on the city of West Wocken package, uh, Jack O'Connell.
Um, yes, so, uh, we've got some work to do on that for sure. But I am pretty confident that we could get a good draft by the end of the month.
And I have a list that I've been putting together for you.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, if you get a chance, yeah.
Yeah. I think we can get it done by the end of the month, have a good solid draft together.
Yeah. Sounds, sounds good then. Uh, I mean, Trevor, do you have a motion on this?
I'll make a motion, we take no action on the city welcome package at this time.
I'll second that.
Can I second, oh, whatever.
Kevin Featherstone?
Leon Myers.
Jack O'Connell.
Chris Burkett. So Jack, if you got anything that comes up, just give one of us a shout. And we'll do whatever's gonna be done, put this out of here. Uh, moving on to seven C, discussion interaction on applications of board members. Uh, there is a, this is the name right here, a list of, have any of you got?
So there were two people I was not able to get a hold of. Um, we have.
How many did you get a hold of?
I got a hold of Nancy, I believe it was Nancy here today.
Pretty close.
Randy Lee, um, Brett Byers, I'm a little confused on because I thought that he had retracted, um.
No, he's still on, he's on the EDC, MZ.
Yeah, I thought he retracted his, um, request, but I may have talked to him that night. We were all supposed to be here, and he said he would be here, so I guess we'll call him. Um, I didn't reach Jane.
Jane did.
Did I reach Jane? Oh, you're right, I'm sorry, I'm confusing you with, apologies, with Nancy. Um, apologies. Um, Vissin, I did not get a hold of, and Laura.
So they, the ones you got a hold of were still interested?
Still interested.
Okay, that's, that's.
Three I did not get a hold of.
Three aren't?
Three I didn't get a hold of.
Oh, seven total. I didn't read my, my last one. I think there were seven total.
Yeah, including me. Yeah, I got a hold of myself, I was very busy though.
So I guess we gotta make a decision on how many people were, it's like back and forth. Didn't, didn't the last time we talked about seven?
We did, yes. We took it down to seven because I think there was originally nine or something.
Or eleven.
Eleven, and went down to seven, but now we basically only have four.
Yeah, I don't know how we did that.
Well, I'm not counting the people that I didn't reach out, I'll just try them again.
I think we need to clarify too, because we keep, it does say board slash committee, but I think we need to, as a council, clarify it. And to make sure everybody understands the difference between board and committee. A board, if we do it as a board, then there's gonna be a whole, there's gonna be a budget, and there's gonna be all these things involved, right? I think that's adding something that we don't need to add.
That opens up the whole thing, that we've had a couple of these in the past, they failed.
Yeah.
We haven't put any resolutions, we haven't looked at the ordinances to make sure what we want here. So I I still think we gotta go backwards and do that. I mean, we're just setting it up for failure again if we don't.
So there's a resolution in there, setting it up as a committee with seven members, but all it does is give us the ability to establish it.
Yes.
And then we have to go back and actually form it through ordinance. So there's a resolution in there giving us the ability to do that. Have it drafted with board or with committee. Committee takes on specific tasks. Board, again, has budgets, they have more control, and they do a lot more than a committee. Committee would be specifically, you're here to do events.
Which is kind of.
Which is what we're looking for.
Which was the idea that the council had for this?
Exactly.
So I have one drafted with committee or with board?
What do we need to do with the path of least resistance to get it going? Because it's already February, spring is right around the corner. And, you know, whoever's gonna be involved had, the people I talked to had great ideas. Um, I would love to get something going where we can start brainstorming.
Could we, could we do that at the, that meeting we're gonna have on the twenty sixth? Could we just put that on the agenda to discuss? That way you don't have to put that off anymore?
Does city council have to be involved in the, in that? Or is that, is that where we are?
Just where is it?
We have to approve it. We have to approve it now. The city council would not have to be involved in, let's say, the members that wanna be part of this seven. Now, we could say if if all those members show up and and at that meeting, we could approve all, you know, we could basically that night approve it, that could be a first reading. And then we'd have to come back for a second reading, obviously, to make it, I think.
Yeah, that's true.
To make it official.
Are several of the people who apply, are they here?
I think we do have one.
Just Jane?
Okay, Jane.
And so for my identification, why would they need to be here if they?
I I guess maybe they don't have to be here, we have, we need to have confirmation if they still wanna be part of it.
Yeah.
Well, if it's a board though, generally, we've always had, had them come so that we can talk to them and ask questions.
Well, it's a committee, it's a committee, but. I mean, we may be reaching out a little far with people not here tonight to say, hey, can we be here on the twenty sixth or whatever date was?
I mean, because if I need to get somebody in writing saying yes, no, I can do it, then we can proceed with the background checks, and then we can.
We could have that part done by it, then make it push forward.
So then I think you're talking through something that's making this a little bit better.
I'm trying, I'm trying.
I would just have the, the people who have applied, have already applied, so they've expressed interest. So I would get, even if you just followed up with an email and said, can you, we just wanna confirm because we aren't gonna do a background check, getting just a written confirmation that way, so you've got a record of it. And then you can pretty quickly go ahead and submit for a background.
Okay.
That'd be awesome. If we could have that all done by the meeting, then yes.
Oh, yeah, that'd be great.
We can do our first, we can do our first reading, and that's one, we're one step away from another reading of having a committee.
Right.
And we could, really, we could turn around the next week and do the second reading.
For a resolution on, we have the resolution giving us the ability to form a committee tonight. If we want to have an ordinance in place for the next council meeting, regular meeting, I would suggest at least putting in our special session so that we set up the guidelines board. So I know what to put in the ordinance.
Which is what you were saying a few minutes ago.
I I'm I'm gonna say this, I'm just making a statement, I guess, I don't want to go on with it exactly. But I know a couple, like, Robin and Leon, for years, has been doing the the park at Christmas, and had done a damn good job doing it. But, you know, after a while, these old bodies, everything will start to wear down.
It wasn't that, it wa, it was not that we didn't wanna do it anymore.
Oh, I know.
It's just the people that you would help us, it just kept getting smaller and smaller.
Yeah.
Because they got burned out or they moved away. So I was, we were having to call in family to come help us. Kevin came a few times and helped press. I mean, we, we, we just called whoever.
Well, your group got smaller.
Yeah.
It really did, and that was the problem. And I think that's what happened with the past park boards too. That, that, you know, they just did not, it just, they just couldn't, never seemed to gel together, you know? So when you're, as you're taking this on, just try to keep them excited and involved, that's the hardest part.
Well, and I think that needs to be the key thought in all this, is they're not, they're not supposed to be taking on decorating the park and all. They want to organize it. And if, and if it's organizing it through a group of volunteers, or if it's organizing it through public works, whatever, right? That, and and I think that's what happened with you guys, is y'all ended up having to do the work. And that's, we wanna make sure that's not what this group's doing. This group's kinda making it happen, not, not getting it done, if that makes sense.
Where I was going to call Robin and Leon out is, they, they've done a lot of this, it's behind them. They've done it for years. I just wanna make sure that, I'm sure y'all will be helpful as much as you can. Not, not to evening meetings, but we can really pick a lot of information off you guys.
Oh, for sure. And you mentioned being partners, um, with the, um, the West Wocken Beautiful. And I don't think that the park board, or committee, whatever it is, should move forward without, um, input from the fire department, and input from the EDC, and then put it, I mean, I always, it is a community for everyone in the city, and everyone has a role to play in making it successful. So there's lots of events that have happened to date that, um, we, we wanna lean in on expertise and connections and networking and the whole deal.
Yeah, they, I mean, I see they're, they.
Okay.
Grab along. Uh, I'm, uh, looking for a motion on seven C.
Are y'all adding that to the special session?
Yeah.
Yeah, but actually, the, the resolution is item T.
Okay.
So.
Well, I thought, what is, what is number nine? Who asked for that?
Well, we're gonna have to move, we're gonna have to move now, in a minute, that's something else, but.
Oh, yeah, here, just a second.
This one, we're just gonna table until after the special session, correct? Because this is just, she's, we gotta go out.
I mean, there's really, yeah, there's no action. I think, I think we just say that we table it until after the special session. So, I mean, I I'll make a motion that we table item seven C for the park committee. And we're gonna add that to our, um, twenty sixth meeting that we're gonna have the Facebook special session. We'll add that to that, to that special session meeting, and we'll have the ordinance. The, we'll have the ordinance to do that, um, to, to make sure we have it on.
We're not gonna have, we're not gonna be able to have a first ordinance together.
Not, no, not to read, no, not, no, so we can actually make sure that that ordinance is, is, has everything in it. I think is what you guys were saying.
Yeah, is that we'll have some kind of foundational, but then we can then talk.
Right, right. And then we can finalize that ordinance in order to put it into action for another meeting to be approved.
So, question, so, let's just say we have four people that are interested, but we're talking about seven. Is it not going to move forward if we can't get the seven? Or are we leaving the language open for the peo, whoever comes to the table?
I think that resolution said ma, it's like a maximum of seven, but there is a minimal in there too, which is four or five, I can't find.
Five, yeah, that's five, that is five. And I don't think we'll, I don't see that as a problem, as long as we've got, I think we'll have five. So maybe start out at five, then we'll jump to seven, I don't know. It may be, be a big thing.
So you had your motion, and then Chris seconded, I think?
Yes. Yeah, all, is all of them ready, Feather?
Kevin Featherstone?
Leon Myers.
Jack O'Connell.
Robin Myers.
Chris Burkett. New owner, new business, we're eight.
Mayor, I'd like to, uh, ask if we could move number nine up to the top.
Right.
And then they would start, they would start at the top once we go through that.
Okay, uh, discussion interaction to approve or deny contract with Jacob and Martin to, uh, prepare a new comprehensive plan. And, uh, that will be Derek and Christie, uh, that have the, the idea they want.
If I could, just real quick, this is, this is something that all of you have been asking for. So we went back, we started looking. The actual last comprehensive plan was done by Jacob and Martin in two thousand and eleven, that's when it was completed. So this is supposed to be something we do every ten years, somewhere in that neighborhood. So I will say that the last comprehensive plan that they did for us, if you actually sit down and read it, it's spot on to where we're at today. So this is something our city needs, so I'll let you have it there.
Well, as he said, uh, the last one that was completed was done in two thousand and eleven. Um, a comprehensive plan or a general plan is, it's got several elements. It's got a, a land use, housing, population, um, and then infrastructure, water, sewer, streets and drainage typically. And it can have other elements too. The one that was completed in two thousand and eleven had those elements that I just mentioned. So you kinda have an administrative section of it that that talks about the housing and the zoning and all of those things. And then the infrastructure, which is essentially a capital improvement plan, tells you what, what elements are needed in the city and what, what the cost is to get there. And so, um, it's a, it's a, not a lengthy, but it it's a process, it takes a few months generally. Uh, there's a lot of investigation and going back and visiting with my guys, and you gotta see what's, what's changed over that, actually, I guess that's what's been almost, they're going on thirteen years now, uh, time period, and then kind of, uh, redoing all of that stuff in the report, so. Uh, and then it's, you know, there's, there's some kind of work, workshop type sessions that you would generally have, uh, with council, and then, and then going through that process of finalizing the document and, and, uh, and accepting it as a council. So, um, I mean, it's pretty straightforward, but, uh, really here to answer questions, I think, more than anything else. So, uh, I'll, I'll look into that.
Any questions?
This figure you quoted us here, is that the bottom line? Is that what we're, will there be anything added on to?
No, that's the bottom line, that's the, that's the total cost. Um, that is, so, a plan like this, and and the one you did before, we, we did, you, you got a grant to do that. But they, that was through the CDVG, just like we're doing some of the projects we're doing currently with you guys. At that time, planning grants were separated from construction projects, and so it was fairly, it was pretty much a, an absolute that you would get the money if you applied. Well, they changed that now, and they put it, they lumped all that together. And so you have to apply and you have to rank high enough to get that funding to do the, to do the study. Uh, you could still do that, it it'll be another couple of years down the road before you would be able to do it. And then there's, then you have to rank high enough to get it. So it's, it's a, it's a much more difficult, uh, process to actually get funded through that program now.
And we've had a, a grant administrator during that time?
Sir.
We've had a grant manager, a grant administrator?
You would not need one on this.
We got a grant for it.
If you did the grant, it would require a grant administrator.
It could also remind, I forget to remember our conversation.
Yeah, I was thinking to say that, so whenever we sat down, because I was actually here with Michael, um, I was, I was fortunate enough to be here and have, and be part of the meeting. Um, what we talked about was, this is important, so we don't wanna have to wait until next year to be able to start this. Um, stop me anytime if I get, if I get off of what we're talking about, but. Um, so I was asking them, because in my business, I have to do this sometimes where you, you start something and you may not get paid till next year, right? So we talked about that, and it actually would work out to where it's gonna take them that length of time that they'll be basically getting finished up about the time we're doing budget workshop. And we put this into our budget, and then we turn around and write them, and write them a check for it. So we could actually start this ball rolling, but wouldn't end up having to pay them until we can get through our budget workshop and allocate the money for it.
And Kevin, one, one more additional part to that. We had also talked about since a portion of it, a major portion, probably forty, fifty, almost fifty percent of it would be infrastructure, that water sewer could contribute half of that, so that it's not such a burden on the general funds to try to carry that that way.
And then we would just have to live with that when we're doing our budget.
Can I make a comment? It's Ray's grant that I want to talk to you all about on the city council. It's for cities our size, with the population our size, and with the poverty lever our size, helps pay for planning such as this also. So that's a possibility too, that we could apply for that grant and get money from the Ray's grant to help with this planning and the actual work too.
What's the timeframe, going applying?
You have to do it by January of two thousand and twenty five, and that's the reason.
What's the time span though, from your application date?
From your application date? You, you hear within about three months of the time that you, uh.
It goes out a year and a half.
Yeah.
Yeah, because typically, it doesn't matter the grant, you know? When you apply for a grant, you're still talking about a year process.
Right.
You might, you might keep in mind, and certainly, any avenue open to you is something you should explore. What you, what you haven't really done is, so normally, we would be at about year seven, planning for the update to this plan, because you need it updated every ten years. And there's, you know, th, this is a tool. And for it to be a useful tool, you need to keep it updated. And there's, there's avenues that open up for grant money and different things if you have it updated. So there's reasons to do that. So if there's, if there's other, if you wanna move forward with this, and you, and you, you feel like the timeframe is, is getting away from you, you can always, you can always get your plan updated and then start planning for that next round.
Right.
Of update. you can always, you can always get your plan updated and then start planning for that next round of update with whatever avenues are open to you.
So Mike, you're saying that everything that they did for us, and the last one, has come to fruition?
Every single bit. I could sit down with each and every one of you and show you even the population portion of it. It's pretty spot on.
Not all the things that it says in there that we should do or upgrade have been done.
Right.
But like, the world has came to the same spot that what they said it was.
And one major part for us, especially water sewer, the upgrades to the infrastructure that they talk about inside there are issues we're dealing with today.
Right.
Had we addressed those issues when we got that from them in two thousand eleven, we might be in a different place. So I can say that all, infrastructure wise, everything that they put in there is still spot on today. Like the size line, many different variables that would accommodate even the growth that we're seeing right now. So I thought they did an outstanding job.
Sort of spooky.
It is kind of spooky. And like I said, I could sit down with them and show it to you.
To me, it's like, okay, how'd y'all know that?
I think, I think you hit on something, that as long as we're gonna do this, that we've got to do what it says, or we basically wasted our money because we should have been where we're supposed to be. So we got to follow through.
Is, you know, you read all these comments from the citizens in town and a lot of it is, it's, it's spot on. There's things that we didn't do many years ago that we can't go back and change, but what we can do is fix them now. And one thing that they're very, very good at is telling you what you need to do and the steps you need to take to get you to that place. So for me, this is my starting point right here. If I have this opportunity right now, we will be in a different place the next time we're doing this book. So.
Turnover has pre- prevented this city from.
Yes.
From being on a problem plan like this.
But here we are. What we can do is change the future today and we can't change the past, but we can fix the future.
Yeah, I don't want to do that. The people that are sitting here at this shoe today, tomorrow, when you're not, or if you're not here, we still need to be pushing.
Yes.
Because we, there's no formal exchange of anything, uh, when you go from citizen to a, a city council or a mayor or a, uh, situation. But we just, there's no, there's no handoff.
It's a marathon and there has to be a handoff.
Yeah.
Because you can't expect, you know, not all of you are gonna be up here forever. We have to be able to hand the baton off to the next round of people that are here to serve and let them keep running. Anyways, I think this is something that has become a critical issue and I think if, if we all think about it, looking at where we're at realistically and then looking at things that are being said, this helps us move forward. It's a step in the right direction and people will see that we're, we're actually doing something.
You ready for a motion?
Uh, for motion.
This has been my baby for the last four years. I would like to make a motion to approve contract with Martin, Jacob and Martin to prepare a new comprehensive answer.
Can we add to your motion that, uh, as long as the payment for this is gonna be in November of two thousand twenty-five?
I'll second that motion.
Is that?
Yeah, November of twenty-five or?
Twenty-four.
I mean, her guts was.
I tried. I tried. I tried. We'd have got that on record. I'm sorry. My, my, my mind was thinking correctly, but my mouth didn't say that.
Okay, uh.
Kevin Featherstone.
Leon Myers.
Jack O'Connell.
Robin Myers.
Chris Burkett.
Never going back.
Excuse me. Number one back who was actually eight, eight, eight.
Appreciate it. Yeah, be safe for now.
You're up. Uh, item eight A is discussion or action to approve the, uh, or deny the rezone on two seventy-six, which is basically a property across the street from the city hall and to the east, going towards the, uh, the driveway of the golf course. That's where this property is that we spoke about in the special session. And this is it coming up for a discussion action on this particular thing. If you don't realize, these, you got it zoned, uh, you got all these, how many lots is it?
Sixteen.
Sixteen?
Sixteen, single family.
Oh, yeah, okay.
This is actually the lot closer to the park.
Yeah, it's on the west, west.
This is the far water.
Okay, okay.
Across from Shandong.
Yeah, okay, okay, I got you.
That's where, that's where the tree line.
Yeah.
This one, did this go to P and Z again or, yeah? Did this, did this go to P and Z again?
It did and I actually approved it. They approved the rezone. They also approved all the site plans you'll see next on the agenda.
Yeah, uh, eight, 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 uh, Chris making a motion to approve. Kevin, second, all in favor?
Kevin Featherstone.
Leon Myers.
Jack O'Connell.
Robin Myers.
Chris Burkett.
And unanimous, moving on to eight B, that discussion or actions to approve or deny the site plan on two seventy-six, just the same.
For the site plans or something?
Yeah, this is the site plans. The other one was a rezone.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah, okay. Yeah, obviously there's the site plan. It looks nice. It looks really nice.
So there's two sets of, there's technically three sets of plans, but two of them are stapled. So the one closest to the tree line is gonna be by itself, the houses that you see in your packets still attached. The other two site plans are kind of tied together, but all three will be taking place at the same time.
Back behind.
From the drive and golf course all the way to the tree line, this is planned to be all one, like all one development done at the same time.
So why don't we have the proposed timeline on this?
So I think we're gonna try to, uh, probably go maybe third quarter of two thousand twenty-four for construction.
Kick it off?
Kick it off. By that time, probably completion, maybe, uh, six months to eight years after that.
Probably second quarter of the next year.
And where, what are you gonna start with?
We're gonna start with all three of them.
Well, I understand it's gonna be a, a gas station and some retail. Is that all going in first?
The gas station, uh, retail for James, uh, the single family is gonna go ahead.
So that's three separate lots. The gas station will be on the one closest to the golf course.
Yeah.
James's lot will be the retail in the middle and the houses will be on the lots closest to the tree line.
But back behind the commercial area.
Yes.
Yes, that's right.
Yes, that would be the part we just rezoned to for the.
Uh, Chris, Kevin, their motion on this, all in favor?
On A.
So A, so it needs one on B.
I'll make a motion on eight B, uh, that we approve the site plans.
I'll second.
Kevin Featherstone.
Jack O'Connell.
Chris Burkett. Get the building.
Yeah, unanimous.
Now, now we're moving, now we're moving to the next property.
Yeah, discussion, uh.
C is the next property.
Uh, this is for another, uh, your site plan for that particular property over, uh, by the golf course. Highway two seventy-six called from city hall. Uh, chairman, entertain a motion on that.
I make the motion, we approve it.
I second it.
Chris, Kevin, all in favor?
Kevin Featherstone.
Leon Myers.
Jack O'Connell.
Robin Myers.
Chris Burkett.
Yeah, unanimous. Moving on to, uh, D. Moving on to eight D, discussion or actions to approve or deny site plans, is this a? Oh, this is different.
This one is the, this one is going to the next, next section later.
There's three lots, like that's three sets.
On our agenda.
So it, yeah.
Chairman, entertain a motion?
I make a motion that we, uh, approve the site plans for two seventy-six on eight or seven D.
I'll second it.
Kevin Featherstone.
Leon Myers.
Jack O'Connell is eight, eight D just for.
Oh, I'm sorry, eight, eight.
Yes.
Good call.
Chris Burkett.
I was taking us back home business.
Okay, uh, moving on to, uh, E, uh, discussion or actions or approve or deny the second reading ordinance of eighteen dash one, dash sixteen, dash twenty-two, four. It's an ordinance in chapter ten, uh, one A, section two A, comma two, of the code ordinances of the city West Walk and to provide new, new sewer water rates. Water deposits continue service where all fees, tap fees, road boards, insufficient funds, uh, check charge and, uh, category definition according to billing fees, providing for repeal of ordinances in a conflict, providing the severability clause, uh, and providing for an update date. I think, uh, I'm off of my notes here, but I know what we got. Uh, we did, we did the, uh, the out of count, out of the city rates, uh, was it two, three years ago? And I'm, I'm gonna suggest this, I'm gonna suggest that we, we've already talked about, uh, and we're, right now, we're gathering data to average the sewer bills so that this, that your sewer bill is based off your water, uh, whatever you put in the house, it comes back out. But, um, we need to make sure we got all the bases covered with them. Yes, sir.
I just wanted to add a couple of things. So of course, you know, I have to do my due diligence and, and read what people have to say about it. So I've read a lot of comments that say we should have listened to the prior city attorney. And just so we're clear, I had conversations with the city attorney who recommended that we do what we're doing now. So this wasn't something, you know, I was sitting at the house watching TV and did a crossword puzzle and came up with this. This was something that was very, like, topical. It was thoughtful. A lot of research went into it. And I did consult with the city attorney who agreed with this percentage and this rate increase. So I don't want, you know, there's a lot of misconception out there that this was just some blab, I might, thing thrown together. There was a lot of time, a lot of discussions, a lot of back and forth to actually make sure that we were being fair. This was not something that we said, oh, hey, let's make some money. That's not what this is about.
This, this increase that we're, that we're, this is a second reading, by the way, but this increase was being talked about a year and a half ago.
Yes.
About you and I.
Yes, we've been talking about this for a long time.
The increase in the, the average billing, I know for a fact that, that Michael and I started having that conversation a year and a half.
And let me add another thing. You know, you read some of the other comments that are being said. Every city around us, and we were methodical again, every city around us, even the SUDs, are having three to four increases a year. Now granted, they are smaller. But in total, three or four increases together, it's the same thing we're doing. The second note I'd add to that is, is our city historically has not done increases the way that we should have. And as our prior city attorney suggested, we should be looking at that consumer index. That one, yes. To make sure that we're in line with the, the percentage increases.
Yeah, it came out some day after David, I don't really have it till the end of the week, I guess.
So my point is, this was not something, this isn't something to punish the citizens that are outside the city limits. This is nothing along those lines. And I do have one final point. I will say this, there are a lot of comments about our water. So here's what I would say to that. If you look at our numbers compared to cities around us, we have outstanding water. Now, we do have some issues in town with certain neighborhoods, we do, but our water quality. I take water home to my family to drink every day. Our crew drinks from every hydrant and flush point in this town. So I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that as well.
I was, uh, you know, we just did this out of city. Uh, my suggestion, no more than there is, I think we're gonna leave it out of city alone and deal with the update on the city. That's my two cents. We just did it not too long ago.
Can we do that on the second reading? Can we amend it on the second reading? I think, well, I guess we can.
Well, if you were gonna leave the out of city, you wouldn't be voting on the second reading.
What now?
I mean.
Well, it's all, it's, it's all of them.
Because you've got them separated between the out of city and the.
Well, I don't know.
Two separate ordinances, and that's what I'm saying.
Well, we're not.
We could just do the city, do the inner city and then.
But, you, yes, you can. My, my understanding was it was, we're doing it that way, this kind of because of equality and you weren't actually unfairly.
Well, and I think though.
Well, that was kind of the situation. I wasn't involved in the previous rating increase, but on this particular one, it, it was fair across the board.
I think what the mayor's getting at is whenever we raised the county rates at that moment, I don't think we touched the city rates.
No, right.
So I think what he's getting at, and I, I guess, I, I understand it and I, I was, I mean, honestly, I was gonna bring it up, but you, you beat me to the punch. But, um, we did raise the county rates then, we didn't touch the city rates. So I think what he's getting at now is, is sort of, if we only, if we only changed all the city rates at this moment and then on our next round of raises, then if we wanna, if we wanna go across the board, then everybody's back on the same plane.
Yes, yeah.
And I think that's probably fair.
Yes.
I mean, that's, I think that's probably fair to say, but which that's, that's, we're talking about F instead of E. Right now, we need a motion on E.
Yeah.
And then we can, we can have all the conversation that just happened. We could just apply it to E and move forward.
Now, I do need to bring up, one, just to highlight something, the out of city trash, that increase would still need to take place because that's.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
We're just talking about water sewer.
Hold that thought. Let's get to the V and then we can work on.
Okay, uh, chairman, entertain a motion on, uh, E, eight E?
I make a motion, um, on A E for the inner city water increases and trash, what was it, water trash and sewer with the average billing.
Yes.
I'll second the motion. Second, all in favor?
Kevin Featherstone.
Leon Myers.
Jack O'Connell.
Chris Burkett.
All right, unanimous.
So, so now if we could rewind the tape and listen to everything we just said, that would apply to F and then we could probably almost come up with a motion.
We need to, we want to do it and to just leave the trash.
We have, we, I know we've had second readings before where we've had to change verbiage or we've had to change something.
Well, I would also say not just the trash, but your, your water sewer tabs, that also would need to be in place. But as far as the rate increase, that's what you would hold on to.
That would be the only small, the amendment would be there would be no water rate increase.
That's, that's it.
To the, to the, to the water rate increase.
Yeah, you, you, you accept this ordinance in, in lieu of the water rate increase. That's it.
That's it.
No, no rate increase for out of, out of.
If we wouldn't have to reread it later, it'd be good.
Well, I could have read it up.
No, read it with that.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know why you'd have to reread it. It would just have to be filed as said, uh, filed as, as.
We still need the average billing for out of city.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
We're just scratching the water.
The only thing we just scratched is the water rate increase.
That's it.
That's a, that's a, okay. Usually when we're doing an, uh, an amendment, day of amendment, you're talking about a, like, scrupler's error, a, we've put in a mistake as to the robe, something like that. We're not gonna substantively change the bill. But when you're talking about substantive change to your ordinance, that's a concern that I have, that you can't pass it on a second reading with a big substantive change.
So just letting the rates out.
I think you'll have to bring it back one more time if you're gonna make the substantive change.
So do we want to make that change and put it on the special session or just put it on the market agenda?
Put it on the special session. Take five seconds.
Yeah.
So just, just take the water rate increase off. So I make a motion that we table, um, eight F until the special session, um, with the water rate increase for the.
It's not that you're tabling it, it's that you're gonna, you're making a motion to make the correction.
Okay, um, so I'll make a motion on eight F and we make a correction and we bring it to our special session. The correction would be removing the water rate increase from that. All other, um, outside city limits, um, the trash and, and all the others, everything else stays the same. Just the water rate increase to be removed. There will be no increase on the water rate.
Kevin made the motion. Chairman, take a second. I'll second.
Kevin Featherstone.
I got Kevin, uh, had made the motion and Leon seconded it. Uh, all in favor?
We did. Kevin Featherstone.
Leon Myers.
Jack O'Connell.
Chris Burkett.
Here's unanimous, moving on to A G. Discussion or action to, uh, to approve or deny the second reading ordinance of three twelve, dash one, dash sixteen, dash twenty-two, four, four. An ordinance of the city council. one dash sixteen dash twenty twenty four, and ordinance of the city council of West Walken, providing for a collection fee for blank utility bills with the MVVA, and that would be something that Amanda and Tammy know a lot about, so, we, we, this MVVA was here last-
Yeah, it's a second, it's a second.
It's a second reading.
Yeah, we've already got all the MVVA, so I make a motion that we approve item A, G.
I second.
Jack second, all in favor?
Kevin Featherstone.
Leon Myers.
Jack O'Connell.
Chris Burkett.
It is unanimous.
Now, this one is a first reading.
H. Discussion or action to approve the first reading ordinance number three thirteen dash three dash twelve is twenty twenty four, and ordinance of the city of, of the city council of the city of West Walken, changing the zoning from residential SF two to commercial, zoning on properties legally described as property ID number twenty six three zero eight and A zero one four one eight, and has, and has whole Zacharak, tract three, acres two, physical address is ten fifty two east, east two, like, two seventy six, West Walken, provided for repeal of conflicting ordinances, and providing for severability, and providing an effective date. Which property is this? You notice I'm stuck here.
Yeah. It's the one record to lift water on a road where they built the water-
Oh, yeah, that little, little replay, I thought you were gonna hit that even one.
We've got a series of them, where y'all had already taken actions, but we were going through and putting the ordinance in, like, this is a lot, there's gonna be several of these that you've actually already done, but we're just doing the-
This, this is one of those, it's just, we're getting the paperwork, so-
She's trying to codify.
I make, I make a motion that we approve the first reading for item A, H.
I'll second it.
Leon second, all in favor?
Kevin Featherstone.
Leon Myers.
Uh, Jack O'Connell.
I think I have the same, I have the same way, correct?
I, J, K, L, M, N, O, P.
Okay, y'all ready? Y'all ready, let's go.
We have to read them all?
Who seconded that one?
Yeah, we can't take them, that's second consent.
Yeah, you gotta take that. Did you say, you made a motion on I?
Well, we've got a need.
Not yet.
Oh, you, on the first reading, we, but we've got the, the first reading of the previous ordinance, this, the one on twenty six three oh eight, we, that one's, we've got, we got it all vote on, so we're, eight, eight, I, the discussion or action to approve or deny the first reading ordinance of three fourteen dash three, dash twelve, dash twenty twenty four, and ordinance of the city council of the city of West Walken, Texas, replanning a property legally described as property number ID one one two five three zero, A zero one eight six, and the Carter Ripken, tract one through five, acres is four point eight six, eight point, four point eight four six, physical address is two seventy six West Walken, we don't have one on there. I guess, we, we're not there yet, the developer's not there, in order to have a, nine more addresses. Anyway, the chairman entertain a motion on this one, and which-
Make a motion to-
I was just gonna ask, which one, is this the same one down there, at the same place?
No.
No, each one of these is different.
Okay, I knew they were all different, but I didn't know if we, so we've not done anything with them, so there's-
We have done-
No, they're all said, done, approved, we just didn't have the ordinance.
All these are first readings that I'm looking at.
Because we didn't have the ordinance, we, we brought it through and approved it, it came, came across and we approved it, we just failed to ever do the ordinance.
I'll make a motion to three four three, ordinance number three one four dash zero three dash twelve dash twenty twenty four.
I'll second it.
Leon second, all in favor?
Kevin Featherstone.
Leon Myers.
Jack O'Connell.
Chris Burkett.
It is unanimous, moving on to A, J, discussion or action to approve or deny reading of the first reading of ordinance three, three fifteen dash three, dash twelve, dash twenty twenty four, is an ordinance of the city, city council of the city of West Walken, Texas, replanning the property legally described as property number one oh one seven nine seven, S thirty four Lancaster Park, unrequited lot, acres thirteen point five six eight, the physical address is Kings Bridge Road, that'd be between, between Kings Bridge Road Dover.
It's the big group of property between Kings and Dover.
Yeah, and that property is, what's that first road that, no, the one that runs east and west over there, so like, the first-
Is it Lake Fair Drive?
Lake Fair Drive, that's it, yeah. That, that's where that's at, it's in that, yeah. He was gonna do it himself, but he just can't find it, he, the developer said if he couldn't get two ten or two twenty out of a spur of the foot, that he might have been a mess with it, building, then get more than that.
Yeah, it's all, this one's already been replanted.
So the chairman entertain, entertain a motion on item A, J?
I'll make a motion to approve first reading of ordinance number three one five dash zero three dash one two dash twenty one.
I second that motion.
Kevin second, all in favor?
Kevin Featherstone.
Leon Myers.
Jack O'Connell.
Chris Burkett.
It is unanimous, moving on to A, K. Discussion or actions to approve or deny the first reading ordinance of three sixteen dash three dash twelve to twenty twenty four, and ordinance of the city council of the city of West Walken, Texas, replanning a property legally described as property ID number one one three six seven six, A zero one eight six, and the Carter Ripken Edition, tract one through three, acres is seven point seven nine eight, it was also in A zero one zero two, the physical address, highway two seventy six West Walken, Texas, providing for the repeal of conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. Chairman entertain a motion?
I make a motion, we approve ordinance number three one six dash zero three dash one two dash twenty twenty four, which is item A, K.
I'll second.
Leon second, all in favor?
Kevin Featherstone.
Leon Myers.
Jack O'Connell.
Chris Burkett.
It is unanimous. Okay, moving on to eight L, discussion and our actions to approve or deny the first reading ordinance number three seventeen dash three, dash twelve, dash twenty twenty four, and ordinance of the city council of the city of West Walken, city of West Walken, Texas, changing the zoning to commercial C, the single family three, or SF three, as we call it, on lots one through sixteen, with the zoning remaining, commercial on lots seventeen, seventeen through twenty one, zoning on property legally described as property number ID one one three six seven six, A zero one six, eight, A, zero one eight six, the Carter Ripken Edition, tract, tract is one, that's one through three, acres is seven point seven nine eight, physical address, this, there's no physical, not an online address, but it is on two seventy six.
This is the one we re-zoned today.
Okay, okay. So, the chairman entertain a motion on eight L? I make a motion, we approve first reading of ordinance three one seven dash zero three dash twelve, dash twenty twenty four, known as item I.
I'll second.
Eight L, item L.
Eight, I'm sorry, yes.
I'll second.
Kevin Featherstone.
Leon Myers.
Jack O'Connell.
Chris Burkett.
It is unanimous. And moving on to M, discussion and our actions to approve or deny the first reading of ordinance number three one eight, dash three, dash twelve, dash twenty twenty four, and ordinance of the city council of the city of West Walken, Texas, replanning a property legally described as property ID number seven eight six four eight, S four nine three one, San Antonio Station, lot three, lot twenty three acres, one point one, acres is one point five seven seven two, the physical address is fourteen sixty nine two seventy six, of the city of West Walken, providing for the repeal of conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. Chairman entertain a motion?
This is the property we replanted for the bait chomp, and then the back half of it behind the-
Oh, this is another, any of the properties they found?
I make a motion that we approve item eight M, which is the first reading of ordinance number three one eight, dash zero three, dash one two, dash twenty twenty four.
I'll second.
Kevin Featherstone.
Leon Myers.
Jack O'Connell.
Chris Burkett.
It is unanimous. Moving on to N, discussion and interaction to approve or deny the first reading of ordinance three nineteen, dash twelve, dash twenty twenty four, is an ordinance of the city, city council of the city of West Walken, legally described as property ID number thirty, three nine seven one seven, it's in an S twenty one eighty five banner edition, section two, block five, block nine through twelve, acres is point eight five one seven, physical address is eleven oh one Railroad Drive of West Walken, Texas, providing for the repeal of conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Chair, chairman entertain a motion? That's a lot of words.
I'll make a motion to approve eight N, ordinance number three one nine, oh wait, hold on, which one am I on, N, three one nine oh three one two twenty twenty four.
I'll second.
Robin second, all in favor?
Kevin Featherstone.
Leon Myers.
Oh, Jack O'Connell.
Chris Burkett. I was getting used to, yeah, you used to say one thing, that's it, but, you have to stick your toes around here. Okay, as unanimous, moving on to eight O, which is discussion or action to approve or deny the first reading of ordinance number three twenty, dash three, dash twelve, to twenty twenty four, and ordinance of the city council of the city of West Walken, conveying tract of land to the estate of Dolly and Ann Burris Berry, deceased, and conveying a tract of land to the city of West Walken, and to correct the placement of U Point, a city street on the property legally described as property number eight two five nine one of the S fifty two eighty five Vanceville Edition, lots one eleven, one, one, one one, and one, one, one four, the acres is point six nine eight nine, we got a title, we just got a title, must have been a mobile home or a tiny home, 'cause it's got the, it's like somebody's driver's license number or something on there. Three oh five Vanceville, West Walken.
So this is the one where, at the end of Vanceville, U Point was built on their property instead of on the city's easement, so we conveyed the city's easement to them, and they conveyed the road down.
So now this thing has already been done?
Yes, it's another one that's already been done.
Yeah, okay, I get it. Chairman center entertain a motion on?
I'll make a motion to approve eight O, approval of first reading for ordinance number three two zero zero three one two two zero two.
I'll second that. Chris second, all in favor?
Kevin Featherstone.
Leon Myers.
Jack O'Connell.
Chris Burkett.
It is unanimous, moving on to eight P, discussion and our actions to approve or deny ordinance number three twenty one, dash three, dash twelve, dash twenty twenty four, ordinance, for the city council of the city of West Walken, for variance of a property legally described as property number I four five eight nine one, which is in the S three two six nine Hells or tree, Lake Walken Retreat, section five, block ten, lot twelve, which is point zero nine one eight acres, physical address is two two five Kirk Lane, West Walken, providing for the repeal of conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
This is the one that it was a hardship due to the city, so we gave the variance to build, and it's gonna be the same size house that would have been required.
Yes, and there is neighbors, they're, they're not gonna let you lock first, but they follow that. Huh? They got it off, man. Been on mass for a while now. Chairman entertain a motion on eight P?
I'll make a motion to approve eight E, of ordinance number three two one dash three oh three dash one two dash twenty twenty four.
I'll second. Robin made the motion, Chris seconded, and all in favor?
Kevin Featherstone.
Leon Myers.
Jack O'Connell.
Uh, moving on for, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I was just so happy that you did it through that.
What, did you, what?
Yeah, we didn't make it all the way around the room, sorry.
So did you motion, did you vote?
Yeah.
And then Chris Burkett. Okay, moving on to Q, A Q, discussion and our action to approve or deny resolution three eight eight, dash two, dash thirteen, dash twenty twenty four, appoint Lee Thompson as the city of West Walken municipal prosecutor and assistant, a city attorney, is that right? Okay. How long is this, how long is this?
So, the, the plan has been, Jim is, you know, obviously, he's already moved off, but he's still available for consult and for the city and for me, as well, as y'all get to know me, the plan is, within the year, he would transition out and I'll take over fully, but I am, I am pretty much doing ninety percent or more at this point, so it's just, so that we saw that, yeah, he, he still knows where, he just, he still knows everything that's happened prior to, so it's good to have that transition period and for me to be able to reach out to him and say, Jim, what did we do six months ago? You know?
So, there's, I've had questions, I'm sure others have too, just to make sure that everybody and the citizens know, at the moment, we put in our budget for our attorney fees, X amount of dollars, and those dollars are gonna be the same throughout the end of this year, and basically, we're gonna be paying you those dollars rather than paying him those dollars. So I just make sure our citizens know that and hear that.
Additional being, no additional, nothing?
Yeah, there's no, there's no additional, nothing, I mean, basically, you know, it's, I think, I think the concern was, is whenever this agenda came out, I probably, I probably didn't have maybe five calls, but people were like, what does this assistant mean? You know, and I'm like, good.
Yeah, I know, there's no additional, no additional part.
Yeah, we'll get it cleared, but I'm telling you, the money, nothing's changing there, you know, during our budget workshop, there probably may be some differences, I'm sure, everybody's gas goes up, whatever, but, but we're gonna negotiate really hard, I promise you. See you later.
You gotta go see a man about a whore.
Can Kevin call for the motion since he-
Yeah, he's out. He's out, can I call for a motion?
I like the motion.
So, is there a motion for eight Q?
I make a motion for eight Q, we approve resolution number three eight eight dash oh two dash one three dash twenty twenty four.
I'll second.
All in favor? Kevin Featherstone.
Leon Myers.
Jack O'Connell.
Chris Burkett.
Motion passed, motion made by Chris Burkett, seconded by Jack.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, mayor can do that in a minute. I don't think we gotta do it right this second. Actually, I think, Kim actually is, usually does those things. I went ahead and got you a motion while you were back there. There's your own office. I don't, stand up.
So, you, uh-
We've had a chip break.
Which, on D?
Yeah.
Oh, Kim's on one, I said D, yes.
Chris made a motion, Jack seconded, and it was all in favor.
And I wrote F?
R.
I'm, I'm, I'm looking right at it, I don't wanna call that F and R, R and F.
See if, see if these will work.
Hey, I know, right, yeah. I need my triforce rule on this one. R, discussion or action to approve or deny resolution number three eight nine, dash two, dash one three, dash twenty twenty four, is a resolution of the city of council of the city of West Walken, authorizing the release of phone numbers to the animal control company employed by the city as an extension of the city and providing an effective date. That wouldn't be a political sub vision, would it?
No, we actually, you guys had already hired them, and this is, they're already acting as an extension, and this is just kind of covering your bases, but I truly think they already had that authority, I think we could have already released phone numbers about.
And they're just gonna form us a vote, right?
And we'd already voted to allow them to have the phone numbers, this just- And we'd already voted to allow them to have the phone numbers, this just?
And explain what the phone numbers are for. Explain what the phone numbers are for.
Yes.
Why they need it.
Yes.
Always ask.
It's so they, if like, pick up a dog, if they can find the owner, if they know who the owner is, they can actually contact them and give them the opportunity to get their dog without a fee or gets out of the city. If the city with it, there's fees involved, that the owner would have to pay to get the dog back.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted the citizens to know it's a good thing.
Yes, some people would register for the dogs. Yeah, yeah, all dogs are supposed to be registered with the city.
Uh.
We'll be on that.
What?
Yeah. All dogs must be registered with the city.
Is there an option that if, if this service that we're paying has to pick up your dog and you're not registered, force you to register?
I am.
That's a good idea.
I mean.
We have an ordinance that says you're supposed to have your dog registered. So I'm supposed to have a yearly registration and rabies vaccination for all dogs. You're allowed four dogs per household, it is ten dollars per household per year. Sixty-five and older, there is no charge.
Well, if the city is having to pay a service to come and pick up these dogs and try and find their owners, it seems like to offset that, if you have your dog picked up and it's not registered, you should.
It should be part of the fee. It would be part of the fee to get your dog.
Yeah, we'd have to amend the ordinance. I, I think what you're saying, I think, I think what you're saying is, is maybe, I think there could be just a simple follow-up process, it's not involved in an ordinance, is if they pick up a dog, that there's communication from them to the person that gets the dog back. Hey, by the way, I talked to uh the city hall and your dog was not registered, right? And then we just set ourselves a follow-up for a week out and we call that person up. Say, hey, you know, Kevin, you know, you, you got your dog back last week. And I know they reminded you, you need to register, I need you to come up and register your dog.
On, on this report right here, it says that they actually did advise someone that you needed to go to city hall and register all four of her dogs.
Yes, that's still, but that's still voluntary, I'm actually, I'm actually, you know, I almost like a tax.
We can also issue citations for the dogs.
That's what I was going to say, under the ordinance, there's probably a citation authority. And then once, so once a person in the city limits was cited by the city, they would come up and have to explain to us why they hadn't, or they could do correction and actually.
And not only can we cite them, but our animal control can also cite them.
I think we just use that, exercise that sign, instead of developing a whole new, spooking the wheel.
Are we actively citing people? I mean, we, we have a dog problem.
We have some that we have cited, yes, and our police officers cite for the dogs.
We're getting in the weeds.
All right, I just wanted to ask the question.
I'm just saying.
Okay, so chairman, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve uh, is it eight?
Eight R.
Or R, I'm sorry. Uh, resolution number three eight nine dash zero two point one three point twenty-two four.
I'll second.
Second, all in favor?
Kevin Featherstone.
Leon Meyer.
Uh, Jack O'Connell.
Chris Burkett. As you know, let's move it on to S, discussion interaction to approve or deny a resolution three ninety dash two dash thirteen dash twenty-three four. A resolution of the city council of the city of West Walkeney rescinding resolution three seven eight, there's six eight, six eight twenty-one, providing for an effective day.
This should be the market on the lake resolution that we rescinded in the last council meeting.
And there needs to be a correction, it looks like on that top one. It says two seventy-eight. Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah. I got just three seventy-one.
I know, well, so it does, it's like three seventy-eight and three seventy-eight, but right here is a two seventy-eight.
Yeah, down here.
The first not bold section.
Right, right here.
That's why I was going three eight seven, but I don't, that's three ninety?
So this is resolution three ninety, rescinding resolution three seventy-eight.
Okay, okay, okay.
But then when you go to that first whereas.
Oh, on the resolution, okay, sorry, I'm looking at the agenda.
No, yeah, so.
Yeah, it's just a tab.
Yeah, but so that's.
Right.
I have a question on this.
Oh, I see it, I got it.
I pulled this resolution from my files where, where we actually approved the, where we actually took action or whatever on that resolution. And it says creating a committee for the farmer's market, it does not say rescinding the farmer's market. Is that going to be a problem? You want to see it?
Yeah.
Are we going to do that again? Oh, she's got, she's got.
You see up here at the top on this right here, it says committee. It doesn't say rescinding the farmer's market, so is there going to be an issue with that?
I thought we wanted it as a committee.
Well, I think we, I think we made it a committee and then we rescinded it because it was never made into a committee official. Is that right, Shannon? Didn't we have to make it, we had to officially make it a committee on paper because it was never officially denied?
A farmer's market?
Yes.
I haven't.
And then we had to rescind it, if I remember correctly.
I know the last council meeting, we rescinded this resolution number, which was the formation of the farmer's market.
But, but what I'm saying is, I think we had to make it more, because it wasn't ever made to, I mean, I think this was just more housekeeping.
Okay, so you're saying.
I just, I just, when I pulled that up, because I didn't know what this resolution we were looking at, what it was for, I had a question, what are we asking to rescind? So I just went back in my files and found that and where we made the resolution. So that's, that's what I'm asking you, if it's a problem. Okay, thank you.
So uh, looking for uh eight S is where we're at. Looking for a motion.
Questions?
Oh, a motion to approve number three nine oh oh two one three two oh two four. Uh, rescinding three seven eight six eight two oh two one.
It's not rescinding, oh, it is rescinding resolution, oh, you're right, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I got to turn. Uh, you got first and then second?
Did you get a second?
No.
No, I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Kevin Featherstone.
Leon Meyer.
Jack O'Connell.
Chris Burkett. As you know, let's, uh, number, letter T, uh, discussion or action.
Special session.
Huh?
We moved that to special.
Oh, that's right, yeah, okay.
No action to be taken.
No action. And we did now, already, they got out of here, okay, good. Uh, uh, number ten, a discuss, discussion and or action to appoint uh sign, remove signers for American National Bank signature cards.
Have a question on that, didn't we already do that? I thought we did that several months ago.
We have to do it every election. We did after the election.
I thought we did, yeah.
Yeah, we removed, we took Pam off.
And a net, and we added you.
Right, no, we did, we, I think, I think it was just remove or appoint, appoint and remove signers. I think that was just a broad statement is what's on here, we're not going to be removing anybody.
So do you got somebody you want to appoint?
Didn't we actually make those motions of doing it at the bank?
Well, they couldn't, you can't change it without the minutes, so uh, I don't know. They will not talk to you without a copy of the minutes.
Yeah.
No time, yeah.
I don't want it all, but it's.
We just had to catch up. Last I spoke to Kim, it's already been changed.
Yeah, it's already been changed.
I don't know why, because.
She wanted to make sure that we had the, the right people was the biggest concern is who, who was truly appointed.
I mean, do, do we feel like that we need another signer that, I mean, has there been times where I'm out or the mayor's out?
You are the current signer.
What's that?
You are the current, we're the signer.
The mayor and myself.
Well, I think that was, that was the recommendation. The recommendation was to add it.
Right, because I think at one point we had three that outside of Kim. For, for.
Kim wanted to add another one, yes.
So Kim was wanting to add another.
She wanted to add another one that wasn't before.
Who are we looking at?
Well, that's the council's decision.
But do y'all have a recommendation? Y'all deal with it every day.
She, she, her main recommendation is somebody that was local, that if we had a situation where he wanted to check right now.
Right.
Who could, who could be here?
Because it takes two signatures.
Right.
I think really and truly, because you're going to Dallas and you're going to Rockwell, right? And I'm, I'm hit or miss, they usually let me know and I'll say, okay, I'll be, I'll be in town on this day or that. And it usually works out.
What about Mike Stafford? I mean, is there ever a point where he needs to sign a check for something, for a car or something?
So you're talking about adding a board person?
Yeah, yes. She's a signature, but she doesn't, we don't use her. See, I think the only tough thing is most, most of their checks, most, I would say the biggest majority of checks go through his department.
Yes.
So that's probably going to be a conflict.
It's got to be a conflict.
It's going to be a conflict, it's going to be a conflict advantage for him.
Kevin, they notify you and you make yourself available when it needs to be.
Typically, yes, and that's what I, my thought was when y'all asked, is I know that, I know that you, you pretty much work.
Yeah, my schedule in, in Dallas is two in the air, I'm not.
Is it?
Yeah.
I'm in two or three times a day, just about every day, so.
Yeah, I mean, so the only person that I, I know that's here all the time.
What about Shannon? And if it makes you feel better, we always have invoices connected with them, so you know what it's for. It's not like you're just going to sign a stack of checks and they go wherever. I mean, they'll have an invoice with them, so you'll be able to see what it is you're signing for.
My question is, are there any liabilities or risks? I'm trying to cover myself if something's.
And that's why I said what I said.
You shine your name, there's a risk.
Right. Well, the council member.
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're, yeah.
So, okay.
I guess there's nobody with God of tradition.
I'm a, I'm a.
Traditionary.
So.
Make the motion, we add Robin as a signer.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Yes, sir.
Chris.
And what about the market on the light checking?
Who is it? Robin? Okay.
Does this affect the other committees signing cards? Because we, we just did ours recently.
If you've changed people, like, did you signature owners, maybe they got off with the board, whatever, you have to have a, a copy of the minutes.
Yes, we know, we've got through that.
Now you need to take that to the bank, but I mean.
This won't change all of them.
No.
It's the city council.
This is the city, the city council.
So who made the motion and seconded?
Chris, I seconded, and then you.
We had you.
Kevin Featherstone.
Leon Meyer.
Jack O'Connell.
Robert Meyer.
Chris Burkett. As you know.
We did have a question over here about what happened to the market on the light account.
Still there, wherever it was, I don't.
So you're going to need someone to decide on that.
The city council, this is, it's in general fund. What do you mean sign off on it?
They should have closed it, it's, where is it going now?
I don't know, it's, it's still open.
It is still open.
Yeah, I don't know if it's going away. What, I think Chris and I talked a while, a while back, uh, whenever we first brought up the, the park board back in that area.
We can look at it.
We could, we could look at what it is if we were sending that board, which is what we did. So then we'll look at what's left.
Yeah, let's spend that money and.
Right.
Nothing's been done with it.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, okay, uh, I've got the, all the elections on, and the stuff on ten. Uh, adding, going to the number eleven, discussion or action to approve or deny the Walkeney Volunteer Fire Department hosting the Easter egg hunt at the City Park on March thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Uh, Dwayne or Mary Hall is speaking.
Lord Neugier. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council, citizens. Uh, we may be jumping a gun a little bit on this, we, we had some issues uh with some of our scheduling in the later part of last year. Uh, it seems like we were doing some things that everybody else wanted to do as well. So then we found ourselves competing against people down the street that thought we had a great idea. So anyway, uh, on item number eleven, we'd like to get the city's permission to use the park for the Easter egg hunt to be held over March the thirtieth. That's because Easter is the thirty-first this year. Uh, we're still in the planning stages. Uh, we hope to partner with the police department, but our purpose tonight is to just, just get the date on the calendar. From March the thirtieth at City Park for the Easter egg hunt.
This is an annual event, we've had this for many, many, many years, and the kids look forward to it. So, and we get involvement from other organizations, like the military organizations, they bring things for it. I mean, there's a lot of community involvement with this, so.
If you've never been involved, last year, five thousand eggs were diverted at three minutes, three. You're going to need about ten thousand. Uh, I don't know.
Usually starts at noon.
I just don't have a clue.
Uh.
Usually starts at noon, it's over at twelve oh three.
Okay. You're right, you're right. Good one.
We actually had family come from Garland and they got here three minutes late. So everything was over with, so they had to go back.
All right, so chairman, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we allow the Walkeney Volunteer Fire Department to host the Easter egg hunt at the City Park on March the thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
I'll second.
Jack seconded, all in favor?
Kevin Featherstone.
Leon Meyer.
Jack.
Oh, Jack O'Connell. This is getting a lot to be a long meeting. I'm here, I'm here.
We shouldn't have done this to you like this. Uh, so, okay, so uh Leon made the uh.
Leon, Leon Jack.
Yeah, Leon Jack made, if you voted, you voted, you, okay, y'all voted, so is Robin.
You may ask.
Okay. Okay, as you know, let's, uh, just, okay, same as a center discussion. Enter take action to approve or deny the city uh, the Walkeney Volunteer Fire Department hosting the Gospel Fest uh in September of twenty twenty-four. Chairman, entertain a motion.
Dwayne's got some.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Same thing, Dwayne, you get time.
You just carry on, you're the mayor here. I was going to say, this will be our third year to do this, and it's been very successful, much so more last year than the first year. We tried to overdo it and schedule seventeen bands and that just did not work.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
It was a nine hour event, so last year was a four hour event with four, four groups that performed, and it was perfect, so.
It was hot, though. I mean, it was a Stephen. That's a.
So I do got questions, like, I mean, is there going to be vendors there? Um, how did, how did last year go? You know, I mean, obviously, you got people, there's, there's trash that comes up, whatever.
Actually, can I answer that for you? The fire department will be selling hot dogs, cold drinks, and chips as part of the fundraiser, because that's what it is, a fundraiser.
Got you.
Okay, that answers it.
And we do, we do clean it.
Yeah, and that's what I was wondering, you know, how that went for you last year. And the only reason why I'm asking is, as you, as you guys all know, is us as the council and the city, we've kind of gotten ourselves, which I don't think this event was ever called out because of it, but there's been other events that we've done that we kind of get questioned or put on the fire of why we give the park away, or. I don't think this event was ever, do you, I mean, I don't even remember this one, so um, I'm all for it. I'm going to make a motion that we.
What time? Noon to four. Noon to four.
I'll make a motion that we approve um, the Walkeney Volunteer Fire Department for hosting the Gospel Fest in the City Park on September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four from twelve to four P M.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Kevin Featherstone.
Leon Meyer.
Jack O'Connell.
Chris Burkett.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to fourteen.
Thirteen.
I'm sorry, thirteen. Uh, discussion interaction to rescind resolution number three seven four dash eleven dash eighteen dash twenty twenty, authorizing city council members to serve as volunteers for any five oh one C pre-organization. Uh, is this? I don't know where the original paperwork said it, I don't, I didn't see it in my bag.
I've got a question.
Yeah.
Who, who asked to have this put on the agenda?
I did.
And, and so in that same question, what, what transpired to make you want to do this? What, what happened to make you want to do this? And by doing this, you can't be HOA president?
You're exactly right.
She can't be on her, she can't be her.
Can I answer your question?
Yeah, so when I went through it.
Were you still?
Okay, go ahead.
I asked a question, but.
Go ahead.
I asked a question, but I didn't start to answer your question.
So.
Well, I understand. There are ramifications, and I'm aware of those. And if you'll notice, I got, I got highlighted here, right?
Okay.
So what I'm seeing about this is, I think the city made a mistake whenever we did this, was we kind of, we kind of only limited this to five oh one C three by the, by the writing here, to a degree. And I think Chris will probably remember, and Leon, you probably would too, because you were in the forum. So I did bring this up one hundred percent to the mayor, and I think I've been on you, mayor, for probably three, four months now. I just now finally got him to put it on this agenda. I think both, I think both you and Chris will remember me saying in the forum when I ran for council. Robin, you were probably there too, because Leon was running for council, so I know you were at that forum. It was my belief then, it's still my belief now, and I think that I kind of went against my belief, because Chris and I were doing a lot of things together. But going through what we've, what we've been through as a city and as a council with, with different people being on council and being on other groups, whether it be a council member being on EDC or on the fire department or on whatever other group within our city, it seems like our citizens take anything that we do and it all gets fogged together. And, and what I feel like is if our council could only be council and they, they're, any of their actions that they do in any other group are not judged to the council. If you're in a group and let's say your group is, is the street sweepers of West Tewa, right? That's what you do, is you sweep the streets. But if you're on the street sweepers of West Tewa and you're also a council member, and you're out here and you're doing something that makes somebody mad when you're sweeping the streets, like say you're messing up traffic, then they're gonna correlate that sweep, street sweepers group with the council. And so whatever that, that group does wrong, or whatever people think is done wrong by that group, it's also gonna be judged by the council. And that was kind of the purpose of what I had, the one purpose I had when I ran, when I ran for council in the beginning. The other side of it is, and I made the statement, I think I just made the same statement back in one of our workshops, is I feel like when people volunteer for things, and you're a hundred percent right, Leon, this does mean that I'd have to quit for the HOA president in my, in my community, which I do nothing but mow the yard, which I would still be able to mow the yard, because I don't have to be the president to mow the yard down there, right? They only asked me to be the president, because they, they want me to run the meeting twice a year. Whatever, that's easy, no problem. So you're a hundred percent right, I do know that and recognize that. But what I'm saying is, I still believe, just like I said at that forum, that a person that volunteers for many things becomes inefficient in all things. And that's what I want to keep us from, is trying to focus on one thing, but that's, that's the small root of, of the reason why I asked the mayor to put this on here, is I would like for our council to be our council, and for our council not to have to worry about, and it doesn't matter if it's good, bad, or whatever. I, I just would like for our city to be standing separate on their own, and if it's, if it's the park board, or a park committee, whatever, if it's keep West Tewa beautiful, if it's whatever, I, there's five people on this council. So the excuse I've always heard was everybody always says, well, nobody wants to volunteer for anything. Guys, there's five people. There's no way that five people are gonna impact this community enough that it's gonna, that it's gonna matter that much. But that, that was the whole purpose why I've been on here, and I think it's been four months. He's resisted me for this long, and I don't know that you didn't just try to jump over, to jump over me or not. I think that might have been an accident, but anyway. There's no reason why, Mr. Leon, to get that answered to you, sir.
Well, it just comes up and says to me that, you know, you're not gonna be able to stay up here all day long and run the water department and volunteer to do that. Same thing, it's a volunteer job. You're volunteering to come up here and tell Michael what to do all day long.
Yeah, it doesn't quite go that way.
Well, it kind of does.
It doesn't. When he volunteers his time, and this is not my place to interject in y'all's meeting.
Well, it don't.
I'm gonna tell you right now, when he volunteers, he gives his time, but that's it.
Okay, but you're not gonna be able to sit here and tell us that we can't be a member of our church and be on committees at church, and you can't run our lives outside of this council. The council cannot dictate what I can do in my personal life.
I have a statement I'd like to read here about this, and it's probably not gonna make anybody, it's gonna make some people upset, but this, this item on this has set me very much.
On which one? Fourteen?
On thirteen.
Thirteen.
Okay. And it's, and it's a couple pages long, and I would hope that I've listened to everybody here, if they're mind, and I would hope that you would respect me and let me say what I want to say. The statement that I'm about to make is my opinion and my thoughts and words concerning the agenda item mark thirteen. I have read and reread this item and have many questions and comments about why this is being asked of me. The verbiage of this item is very vague and open ended, and because the verbiage, it states that no council member of this city may serve on any other committees, boards, profit, nonprofits, what have you. That means that we are being asked to not be involved in any of these groups that provide vital, necessary services to our city and our communities. That being said, I would like to ask, am I, and use these as examples, I myself or others are being told that we may not serve on a woman's charitable group that for forty years has provided scholarships for high school seniors that live in our city? Am I being told that I cannot serve, or anyone cannot serve as an ambassador to our chamber of commerce that promotes businesses in our city and is given city, our city recognition and opportunities to shine by holding events and other activities to bring visitors to our city? Am I or others being told that we cannot volunteer for a nonprofit that provides, that promotes the health, safety, and protection of our city? Am I or others being told that we cannot hold any position on my church council? Are we being told that we cannot volunteer with any organization that provides food and necessary items for basic survival to many cities in our cities and our community? Are we being told or asked not to participate or support any military organizations in our city when they ask for volunteers to help with their fundraising events and activities? I can only say that I am being asked to forfeit all of these things so that the only focus in my life is to be on the city council at West Tewa. I find this invasive, intrusive, and insulting. I take my position on this council very seriously, and the only times that I have missed a meeting was due to illness, or while I was on vacation, or for a family emergency. I do not let other activities take precedence over my duties as a council member, and I will not let any resolution dictate what I can and cannot participate in, in my private life. The action that I'm being asked to take will also affect council members in the future as well. Does this mean, as a military veteran that is active in our military organizations, that they cannot serve in any position in that organization because they wish to run for public office? Does this mean that anyone that chairs a committee or presides over a charitable organization or nonprofit cannot run for office due to their responsibility to those groups? Does this mean that anyone that wishes to run for public office can only be a council member and that's all? That limits many good candidates from running, because I can assure you that they will not give up those positions because of the rigid rules stated on this agenda item. This is a small town, and there have been many times that a volunteer, that volunteer positions and chair positions have been difficult to find or recruit people that wish to fill those positions. Why am I be asked to put something in place that limits them from ever running for public office because they are serving in a volunteer position and cannot have other outside interests? This need to control my private life is reprehensible, and it demeans any efforts that I or anyone have put forth to these organizations that I or they serve or have been a member of. My position on this council has always been a priority, and it has never suffered due to a lack of inattention of, or my participation in any volunteer organization. I read my council packet, I make notes, and I call if I have questions. I have, I have gotten in my vehicle and driven to places to verify references. I've spent countless hours doing research. I've talked to people in this city. I've gone to training and attended meetings to listen to what is going on in our city and our council, Hunt County. I have spoken to leaders of Hunt County and asked for their help. I have forfeited many occasions with my family and friends, because I had a meeting that I was required to attend. At every social gathering, I have made announcements and made a point to promote our city. It seems, it may seem to some that I'm overwhelmed or overstretched beyond my limits to effectively serve as a council member, and that is what is so insulting to me and should, and should be by anyone that wishes to fill a council seat. We have been put to the task to give a hundred percent of our time and focus to this city, but even with the best of intentions and as hard as any of us could try, that is not an attainable goal and would be difficult for even the most seasoned professional. When we leave this council chamber, we go home to our families to plan our next day at work, to focus on businesses that we own, to care for our home and our properties and our families, and to take time to rest for the start of a new day. Our focus is not a hundred percent on this city. It is what is on the priority at the moment, and that is living up to our responsibilities for our homes, our property, and our families. And the next thing I have to ask is, what will be added next? Will we be told that we cannot serve on a, as a council and hold a full time or a part time job, or own a business, or participate in any activity that fills our lives? What is next? I will not give up any volunteer position, and I will not vacate this, my seat on this council. This agenda item is nothing but trying to control the lives of anyone that wishes to serve as a leader in this city, and again, I say, is invasive, intrusive, and insulting. Would it not be that in the best interest of our city to let those that choose to be involved with and volunteer for organizations? How better to show other cities that we are a vibrant, growing city with many opportunities for everyone to participate in any effort that they choose to without being limited to do one thing and one thing only? Being a city council member is a privilege, not a right, and should never be taken lightly or to prove a point. And when you decide to run for office, it comes with certain responsibilities and duties that should always be a priority. However, it should also be tempered with community involvement and sharing our strengths with others, not restrictions. Thank you.
So, mayor, I don't think this was actually been able to be devoured by everybody the way it should have been. First off, listen, I appreciate what you just said, but listening to what you just said is, this resolution was already part of our city. So this is, this is not something that's being brought. This is something that, that I asked, what I'm saying is to, to rescind this, right? I'm asking that we, that we take away what we've done before and we come up with something that fits into our city, which is not gonna say we can't be on the civic center. What I'm saying is to try to keep our city organizations clean of having somebody that wants to run for EDC or P N Z or some of these other organizations within our city to keep, to keep us. And it's, it would actually affect me being the president of HOA, because at some point, my neighborhood association may need to come to the city for something. Well, if I'm the president of it, then that would be a conflict of interest in my eyes. So I think there was a lot of assumptions that were made, and, and I mean, Leon, you kind of, you kind of got sideways on me and even on Michael a little bit. I mean, I really think that was a little uncalled for, but, because there was really assumptions made instead of asking what was the actual intention here.
I did ask you that in the very first question.
Well, and I tried to say that, but then you sort of got sideways with me and then made, you know, made the comments, but it is what it is.
I'll, I'll, I'll put my two cents in here. So I went back and forth about this, and I'll just do it from my own shoes. I can only walk in my own shoes. So I am, have been president of HOA in the past for my community, and I'm on the board. And without giving any details, there is someone in our community that, there's some issues. And I can see that this, really, the language around this has more to do with conflict of interest than anything else, not being told what you can and cannot do.
Right.
I, I thought through this and asked myself honestly, could I potentially be up here on the city council and make a decision or vote for a resolution or whatever it is that would negatively affect this person that we are dealing with in our HOA? And so I'm looking at it more so from a conflict of interest perspective, not being told what you can and cannot volunteer for. So I don't know how, I, I think that conflict of interest is very valid. And if you are in an organization or you volunteer, you do something that is in direct conflict with the cities and the citizens, then absolutely, I agree. I'm personally not reading it that way, and I, and I understand your passion for what you just read, and I just tried to look at it from what I could potentially positively or negatively influence on my community members as someone that's sitting on my board. So I don't know what that tells anyone either way. I'm just trying to bring some levity to it.
It's just the verbiage of it. It's so vague. It's not specific. It, to me, it is. That's how I read it. When I saw it, I'm telling you, it didn't insult me terribly, because I've worked, I've lived here for eleven years, and, and myself and many of these people in this room right here have given so many hours to doing things, and they still are able to find a balance to serve on their committees and to do, and to, to do things with other committees. The city council should not have any bearing on what we do here.
So if, so if I were to ask, would, would there be language in this that could be addressed, that addressed conflict of interest?
But you're saying the verbiage of it. I'm trying to understand what you're talking about.
It's just vague. It's not, it's open ended. There's, there's nothing in here that says.
Robin, I understand what you're saying, sweetheart, but this is already a resolution in our city that I was asking for us to rescind and for us to rewrite and to be able to draw finer lines to where people, that's what I don't understand.
That's the problem.
You're getting.
We're going backwards. We need to review it and rewrite it or come up with it before we rescind it, because you've got people serving right now. If we voted for this, it would stop that.
Right. I'm gonna have to make a choice between my council seat and what I serve on. Yes, you are, according to this, you are.
And this, 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 this was put in place because of me.
Look, look, listen.
This was put in place because of me and the fire department.
And it was written terribly.
Well, if we need to go back and rewrite it, not just do away with it.
That's what I'm asking for us to do as a council. Lose your feelings and let's work together.
You're not asking like that.
That's the first time I've raised my voice. You raised yours, and she raised hers, and you raised yours first. That's, you guys won't listen, because every time your emotions raise up. But what, you keep saying this is written. This was already written. It was part of our city already. I'm asking that we rescind this and us as a council come up with something better.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask you this. If you knew that this was already written, you had knowledge that this was already written, four years ago, when I, when I came on this council, why have you just now got a problem with this?
Because I'm not busy looking at all of this all the time. I mean, I'm so, I'm sorry that I don't, I didn't catch this now, and I'm not working on, how much time have I been spending in the city hall here lately? Because I've tried to change my focus some, guys, right? I've tried to change my focus. So I, I, it kind of, it kind of raises my emotion that you ask me why I'm just now doing it. I apologize that I haven't been spending much time in the city hall for the past four years. I've spent more time outside the city hall helping the city.
And I haven't.
I didn't say you haven't, ma'am.
You may as well have.
That's not, that's not true. That's not fair.
That is not what I said. My emotions were high just as yours were high, because you asked me why I, why I'm just now fighting.
Well, we're just gonna have to agree to disagree on this. That's all.
What I'm asking is us as a council comes up with something that has cleaner lines, because to me, I think this was written terribly, right? And what I would like is for us to be able to come up with something that says if we're on one of our major groups or, or being ahead of, being ahead of whatever, that we, we keep these lines straight. I'm not saying that we can't be on the civic center. I'm not saying we can't be on the fire department, right? I'm not saying you can't be a member of your HOA board, but don't be the president of it.
I'm not gonna accept that.
It sounds like a workshop is needed to do it, so a motion to decline it until that is done.
I'll make a motion that we do not rescind resolution number three seven four one 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 eight two oh two oh.
Well, it sounded like Chris was making a motion in the other workshop.
Well, I already made one. What was your motion? To not rescind resolution number three seven four one 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 eight two oh two oh.
I picked mine up twice and I thought, well, maybe. I picked mine up twice, and I thought, I'll make it again.
Timer. We got a motion.
I'll second. Motion to not rescind.
All in favor? You know the discussion, by the way?
I, I, I would like Chris's idea of a workshop, but it looks like we wouldn't pass it.
Leon Meyer.
Robin Meyer.
Christopher K.
So, workshop is off the table? I, if I was able to quickly give a very simple conflict of interest example, I don't know why we can't have a conflict of interest conversation.
Well, you're not, you shouldn't be voting on anything that you've got a conflict on. You've got a fiduciary duty to the city. You can abstain from voting on things that there is a conflict on already.
So, I think that's the point, because there are things that come up to every person on this council that will affect some organizations.
Just because it affects the organization, you don't own the organization, you just are on the board, that doesn't give a conflict of interest, because you're not benefiting from it. The organization is, that you are just a member of.
I am very tied on this. Because...
Their city council members have to sign an N D A every meeting they have, every meeting, because most of them are business owners.
So, you had a motion...
So, they all sign off on it and say, hey, what we're gonna talk about does not benefit me or my, my company or whatever.
Oh.
Because they're all business people. These are all people that have been there for years.
So, you had a motion and you had a second.
It's a conflict waiver, and that's, that's why that's why I was like, no.
Did you have your votes, Rob?
We had three votes. We had three yeses.
Motion to not rescind.
Three yeses and, and two no vote. Okay. Um, we did all in favor, or we, have we done all that? You carried a kind of motion. Yeah, I got your motion, man. All in favor?
We already did that.
Already did that, okay, we're done. Sorry about that.
Just to make a last point, I just wish that everybody would be willing to have a conversation about it.
Say what?
I said, just for a last point, I know it's been voted, but I find it unreasonable that we can't even have a conversation about it.
We just had one.
Meaning a session, meaning a...
A special session, I, I get it.
And that's fine, because I'm...
With number fourteen, it basically is no good, so we could just say, to do a workshop on it. It looks like it's the same thing.
I make a motion on number fourteen that would take no action. It was already settled, it's on number thirteen.
Well, number fourteen would have been the rescind resol, the resolution is rescinding what we already had in place, so it sounded like you got a motion back.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Leon Meyer.
Robin Meyer.
Christopher K.
Okay, uh, and so I guess that, uh, fourteen, uh, I asked for a motion and a vote. We got three yeses and two no's. Uh, the yeses prevail unanimously. Uh, moving on to number fifteen.
No, not fourteen.
So, that is right, you get another, the same thing.
Fourteen, no, fourteen was a motion to to take no action. And we got three, three yeses to take no action.
Yeah, yeah, three, three yeses, two no's. But now it's a whole ballgame. Now we're fifteen. Duty citizens input, not concerning, uh, uh, agenda item.
Can I just say something about the volunteerism in this community? Uh, as chairperson of the Keep Westewalken Beautiful, we have presently, excuse me, presently only five members of our community, uh, on our committee. Uh, we can have up to seven. It is hard to find volunteers in this community.
It is.
We have a lot of elderly people, we have, uh, people that work in Dallas that don't get out in time to come to meetings and such as that. Uh, it just, we don't have a pool of, of volunteers to draw from. And each one of the committees, I'm sure, has the same issue, trying to get volunteers. Uh, we have just recently adopted, uh, two miles along two seventy-six with the text dot, uh, Dr. Highway. We're gonna need volunteers, we're gonna need hands on the ground besides our five people to be able to pick up this trash that's all along two seventy-six. So, I just want y'all to know that, um, we really need more volunteers, and we need people like the concerned citizens on the council to be able to be on other committees, to be able to help us reach our goals.
Well, part of the, I, I'm gonna speak, I'm not gonna answer, I can't answer you, but I can speak to it. And I think we're, we're, uh, uh, where Kevin was going. We've got that in place now, and if you want me to, I'll continue, but it ain't gonna look pretty. We've got that situation now where we serve on both boards, but what's happened is priorities get along. In other words, if I'm on your, if I'm on your, your committee and I give you a hundred and ten percent, and I go join the park board, and that park board is my, my, my mic right now. It, the other, your, your, yours is, I'll make it to you later when I can or whatever, but that's what's happening. The, the initial responsibility is getting dropped, totally dropped, and, and, and there's nothing helping the city at all, so, I mean, just, I agree with what you said, I mean. Did you have something to say, Pam?
I just said, that's not true.
What's not true?
What you just said, it's not true at all. They never have dropped their interest in the city the whole time they've been in there.
I am, you, you really have no idea what...
Hey, I do have a lot of ideas, I said all this council on that.
We're, we're going way too far off of this. Uh, do you need a motion for sixteen?
Fifteen.
Sixteen, I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Uh, Kevin first, Eddie second.
I'll second.
Jack second, all in favor? Uh, Jack? Jack, Robin.
Oh, I'm sorry, I checked.
Yeah, it takes a while.
I don't, I don't think until you say yes, I'll flip it.
You got it, I'm all right.